Yes, how are you Kelly?
Okay.
I'm good.
Summer going well?
Our consultant Dan, it's good to have you here, it's good to see you again and so we'll turn that over to you guys.
Okay, thank you Mayor. I'm Susan Muir, I'm the Parks and Rec Director. I just want to introduce the people that are here with me tonight. First of all, to my left is Steve Ganzer, he's our Rec Sports Manager. Steve has been with the City of McMinnville for 24 years and you usually see him down at Joe Dancer where our team sports are playing, but I also have discovered that Steve is a little bit of a ninja on our management team particularly related to numbers and budgets and so he's been doing a great job of really managing the technical pieces of this project, so he's here in case any questions come up. And then Dan Eds should look a little familiar to you, he's the one that came in November and presented the Planning and Building Fee Study that Heather Richards did last year. So, we, I'm gonna give a brief overview and then we're gonna hand it over to Dan and then we're gonna ask you a couple of policy questions and then we'll try and end a little early so you can take a break between meetings. So generally, a lot of information was in the staff report and then the study was attached to that. Really what we're doing is getting a base data level methodology here tonight so that we can make, apply a filter and what we're looking at is kind of an equity lens to the way we set fees in Parks and Rec. When we looked back, well actually about two years ago when I got here, what I found was that each manager within their program area was doing a great job balancing their budget, meeting their cost recovery goal of about 50% that was outlined in our budget and making really good decisions about how we issue scholarships or do fee waivers. So those were happening within each program area in Parks and Rec and what we're going for now is to look at consistency across those. So instead of looking at what I think of a horizontal axis within each program area, which is the way our budget is set up, really looking at it from more of a customer perspective and more of an equity lens and how we apply those to the different programs. Because we offer programs for all ages really in all of our facilities and so we need to look at it from the customer perspective and the MacTown 2032 strategic priorities that you all lined out really tee this up nicely so that we can be at that point. So, again I mentioned that mostly what I, we could find in terms of policy decisions that the City Council had made related to Parks and Rec fees was found in the budget documents and as the Mayor asked me last week during our work session where those were and where we hit on that line and for the most part we were about 50% cost recovery. There were some that were a lot more. Kids on the Block is one that repeatedly hit about 90 to 95% cost recovery and that was because of a large donation from the Mayor's Ball and as we learned going through that KOB assessment, well we actually learned a lot about fees. Keeping fees artificially low is not a long-term sustainable way to fund programming. We also learned that the equity lens that we thought we were applying was really only reaching those people that knew how to access our programs and knew how to get in the door and that we were leaving some people behind. And so as a management team in Parks and Rec, we really want to strive for something higher than that and look at the whole community and how we can get more people in and access our programs through a little more creative way of looking at our fees and you may hear Dan say this and you'll certainly hear me say this, it's an opportunity for us to look at the dials of where we turn fees up and where we turn them down based on our values and our community values and our filter of the strategic plan. So, I want to talk a little bit about the process. This looks like a multi-step process and it is and we're at what I think will be the, some of the easiest things here tonight. We're gonna review the data and the methodology, we're gonna walk you through three policy questions that we'd like your direction on and then we're gonna go back and really hang some detail on that and put a lot more meat on the policy direction that you give us. We intend to conduct a staff open house and at that open, or the public open house and at that we also want to unveil a new scholarship program. This is something that we are rolling out right now for the August 1st KOB registration deadline and we think we'll get a lot of feedback as part of that and we want to talk to the community about how that works. Once we get that detail and kind of categorize all of the programs, we'll come back to you with a little more detail after we had filled that out and then we'll apply that filter to all of our fees and programs and look at setting a fee structure for that. And then of course, as you heard last week, as part of the master planning process for facilities, Ballard King is looking at our programming across those spectrums, where we're hitting the mark in terms of offering programs and where our community would like to see more of and that will give us an idea of how to hit those financial targets for cost recovery. So, we're excited to be launching this program here and excited for the changes that will come as about as part of this. And first we want to get you the data and the grounding that we've done so we can make some good database decisions and I'll turn this over to Dan Eds now who's been great. It's been great to have somebody who is familiar with the way we set up our indirect cost modeling and he can take you through the report.
Okay. Thank you Susan. Well Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to be with you again. The last time I was here was in November and it was a very different kind of evening. It was dark and it was raining. So, this is terrific, so thank you for having me down. Also many thank you on behalf of my company, Capital Accounting Partners, for the opportunity to serve the city once again. And this is not part of the scheduled program, but I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Susan and Steve. I don't very often get a chance to work with especially Parks and Rec people who are as sensitive to city community values as Susan and Steve are and I just greatly appreciate that. Most of the time in my interaction with recreation people it's pretty much, you know, dollars and cents and nuts and bolts and those kinds of things, so it's just been a delight working with Susan and Steve and really thinking through, you know, what are the community values here and just cannot tell you how much I appreciated that. So, there's really three parts to this project that we did. One is to calculate the full cost of recreation services and that was based on fiscal 2018-19 budget and I'll get into more of the detail on that in a minute. The other one was calculate the full cost of revenues for each major recreation program and/or facility and really to tie those two together so we could look at a program and we could see what's the full cost of that program and then the other one was look at the revenues from that program so we get a good accurate picture of revenues and costs and how they match up. And the other thing is work with staff to develop cost recovery objectives and policies and strategies, which is what we're doing tonight. And before we go any further, let me just be quick to add, I have a slide that announces questions, but if there is a question, please do not hesitate to stop me, otherwise I'll go on forever, but any question that comes up during my conversation, please feel free to stop, stop me. This project aligns with your strategic plan, Susan gave me a copy of your strategic plan which was I think adopted sometime in the last month or two or three or four and as I read through that, I could not help but see where this particular project really aligned with that, I was quite pleased with that. So, you know, this aligns in the sense that we want to provide a framework for, to evaluate cost recovery opportunities, look at accuracy and total cost recovery, we want to make sure we accounted for direct cost and indirect cost, we want to make sure we facilitated a policy discussion relating to equity and access and then also look at consistency across the department as Susan had mentioned in setting fees and targets for cost recovery, make sure that those methodologies were consistent across the department and then finally to make sure that there was transparency within cost recovery strategies for both the public and the users. You actually have seen this in November, I wouldn't expect you to remember it, but Susan wanted me to bring it up again and a year ago in the project with planning and building, we also did what's called an indirect cost allocation plan, which is simply a way of taking citywide administrative overhead and applying it to city services. And there is, the way we do that is consistent with the Federal Office of Management and Budget and the way they say it should be done, doesn't have to be done that way, but this is the highest and most robust methodology of allocating overhead cost. This is just a sample of that, of the complexity of that, something called a double step down. So in applying citywide overhead cost, the way the federal government says it should be done, we can't just take human resource as an example and a nice round number of $500,000 and apply the human, the cost of human resources out to the various departments. Because in fact, human resources itself also consumes city overhead. So what we say is the first pass through, we take the cost of human resources, we pass it through to the various receiving departments, but some of that cost is actually consumed by human resource, so then we run it back through our model once again, which hence the name, the double step down. That's probably the most complicated thing I'll be talking about tonight, so I don't expect a whole lot of conversation about that. I talked about a double step down, I know a lot of finance directors and their eyes go place over a bit and they, what's that? But it's simply a way that the federal government prescribes if you do an indirect cost allocation plan, this is how we're gonna do it. And as an example, you see here, Parks and Recreation, this was actually the model that we developed a year ago and you see $245,000 of citywide overhead is, has been assigned to Parks and Recreation and in the modeling that I've done for this project, I've taken that $245,000 and allocated that out to each of the departments. So we're talking about the full cost of recreation services is exactly what that means, is a full cost from all sources within the city for recreation services. Any question about that? So what drives cost recovery? I get asked this question a fair bit and it sounds like a simple question, but it actually is, there is some complexity to it. What drives the recovery of cost? One is the targeted cost recovery rate. As Susan mentioned, by and large, generally speaking, the department has a 50% cost recovery rate and anytime you set that as a target, and I don't care if it's 25% or 50% or 75%, that tends to drive cost recovery because program managers now have a target that they are expected to meet and that just sets the direction. Frequency and updating of fees is another method or way that drives cost recovery. One of my standard recommendations to any city I work with is that fees ought to be adjusted every year and when fees are not adjusted on a regular basis, you get the situation where, as I'm working with a couple of cities right now, fees haven't been adjusted for 20 years, so they're gonna be looking at some significant adjustments in fees. City overhead rates, now in the project a year ago with Development Services, it's fairly common to take city overhead cost and apply those to planning and develop and building and engineering services, it's more uncommon for recreation. So, I really applaud Susan and Steve for making sure that we wanted to capture the full cost of services so that you could be making fully informed, totally transparent observations, recommendations for your city's recreation programs. Challenges of allocating program development and administrative costs, as you might imagine, the program development for the various programs is a large component of cost and how do you allocate those costs to various programs? And then scholarships and discounts and memberships. My observation of working with dozens of cities up and down the west coast is that some cities take their scholarship programs very seriously, others it's a little bit more casual. My bias, which I will tell you right up front, is that I think cities do themselves a service to provide services that are of high quality and cost should follow that. I also believe and I have also seen many cities that take a very aggressive approach to cost recovery, but they also have an equally aggressive, or shall we say generous scholarship and discount program for those families that cannot access those services. Various components of cost in this project, we have direct program costs, we have division administrative expenses, we have department overhead, we have citywide overhead and the combination of four of those, of those four components equals total cost. Any question about anything that I've said so far? Okay, I'll move on. All right, so this is both an example of what we did as well as the, one of the challenges. So as you could see, as I just, as you can see here, there's a lot of different components of cost. So one of the challenges in these kinds of program or projects with recreation is how do we take all of those various components of cost and assign them to direct programs? And for the most part, we did that on the basis of direct program costs. So you can see there, drop in adult sports, drop in the direct program cost that we calculated was $2,436 and then going down the list, youth soccer, the direct program cost of that was $55,898. So the youth soccer program consumed or was allocated more of direct program cost, of department program cost and then any, any citywide cost as well. So we're just, we're just creating a simple ratio. If drop in youth sports, adult sports, if they consumed a certain amount of direct cost and youth soccer obviously consumes more, then they're gonna, they're gonna be allocated more of the indirect cost. Any question about that? Okay. So this is now kind of the summary, so you've got, I'm just gonna go to the bottom line over here, 48%. So that says that on balance, recreation services, when all of the costs are accounted for, that's program cost, department cost, the citywide cost, total cost recovery is 48%. So your target is 50%, so you know, you're really very, very close. I, I, from my perspective, that is about average. I have done many of these projects where I walk in the door and Susan's counterpart says, wow, we generate so much money, we put money back into the general fund and I usually, my usual response is, okay, we'll see. In fact, someone still owes me a lunch because I debated it with her. So my, from my observation, the average, the range is somewhere around 34, 35% up to maybe a high of 65, maybe 70%. And what really drives that is the, I would say the alignment of recreation services with the values of the city. So on one hand, I work with cities that are more upscale and where recreation services is considered more a part of an upscale community. On the other hand, I work with cities that are more economically challenged where recreation services for those cities is part of the social infrastructure of the, of the community and those two broad-based perspectives of the role and the value of recreation services drives a lot of that cost recovery. Any questions? Okay. Summary of benefits, so one of the things that we did, we didn't just look at programs and program cost recovery and programs revenues, but we also tried to dissect or trisect those programs into the beneficiaries of those programs. It's not an exact science, there is some overlap, but by and large, we tried to get a sense of youth sports, youth activities, what's the total cost recovery for youth programs? There you can see, when everything is combined, it's 51%. Adult programs, you can see there, it's 63%. Senior programs is 29% and again for the total of 48%. And my observation is, I think this, and in speaking with Susan, this can be part of the ongoing discussion of where you want your pricing for the various programs to land and gives you a sense of where cost recovery is happening right now and how you might want to tweak those, those, those prices. Yes, sir.
Dan, as we look at this, at this screen, scholarships that we may give, is that included in the cost recovery?
Great question. Those are net cost recovery dollars, so we're just looking at the bottom line of dollars that have come in. Susan, is anything you wanted to add to that?
I would probably add that the scholarship and the fee waivers, to give you an example, that's one of the reasons why being consistent across the department is gonna be a great outcome of this. I think we have more than 10 different ways we've administered fee reductions across the department in different, the different program areas and I would also say that they haven't always been quantified. So each manager has made sometimes spur of the moment decisions about whether or not a kid or a family gets involved in a program based on what's right in front of them and they sign up as a participant, but we haven't ever quantified the amount of money that we were subsidizing in that regard, so it's a good opportunity for us to get on that.
But as we look at this, at this chart, Dan, you indicated this is net, so that would take that in. How we administrate it is something to discuss, but we can look across the board, 48% and then our youth programs at 51% as the chart would say.
Yes, yes, yes ma'am.
I have a question in regard to this, I know we've been using this program, oh sorry, I know we've been using this program to enroll people into the various soccer programs and stuff like that, the online computer program, has that helped with putting together better knowledge on the discounts and things like that or scholarships or whatever, does that make it more uniform or it hasn't been effective that way?
It does actually help.
It does actually help us track the scholarships that we actually have a program for, yes, we're able to track those, family discounts, multiplayer, multi-participant discounts, we can collect in that. The reduced fee for Kids on the Block or the youth programs that people apply for and receive, we can track that. The other things that Susan mentioned about spur of the moment things that we are not collecting and through active net, the online registration.
Okay, thanks, I was just curious.
Thank you. One of the things we did do in this project was do a comparison of fees. And I do a lot of these kinds of programs or projects where city councils want to know how their fees correspond with other similar benchmark communities. And so this was just part of that. And every time I do one, I feel like, you know, raising my hand saying, you know, don't get too excited about this. Especially for recreation services, because there's all kinds of knowns and unknowns that go into setting recreation fees. Also, when we're looking at comparisons, we're comparing current cost with a price. As I mentioned, some city overhead costs may or may not be included. Fee descriptions are sometimes the same, sometimes they're the same thing, but they have difference, so you don't know if you're comparing apples or oranges. Communities don't routinely update fees with a robust cost analysis that you have done. In fact, it's more uncommon for recreation services. So I would applaud you and Susan for wanting to really know exactly what your costs are. I think that's just part of good decision-making. Service levels can vary dramatically. And then recreation services, as I mentioned earlier, frequently have multiple objectives. Quality of life, supporting and being part of the infrastructure for delivery of social services. I've had lots of conversations with recreation program directors, and it's really part of the whole issue of public safety, where the police and recreation services are very coordinated together. So there's lots of moving parts in setting fees for recreation services. And so to make simple comparisons, I think I would say caution. So here's the benchmark communities, Newburgh, Woodburn, Hillsborough, Wilsonville, Newport, and Redmond, area park and recreation services over on the other side of the mountains. This is a summary of all of the numbers. And I'm just going to pull a few out in terms of a slide that I thought were symbolic of the total. So six-month aquatic membership pass, you can see there, McMinnville is in the red. My observation of looking at that and comparison to the other benchmarks cities is you're not, well, I guess in that case, you are on the lower end, but you're certainly not the higher. Same thing with the summer day camp fees, you know, you're kind of right in the middle of the average, maybe on the lower end of that average. And that's kind of what I saw, you know, looking at fees on a more fee-by-fee basis, some low, some high, but on the average, you're probably on the lower end of the average. Recreation services does tend to be a competitive environment, as opposed to building and planning, where there is no competition to, if someone's going to build a new house in the city of McMinnville, the only place they can go to get a permit is city of McMinnville. On the other hand, if someone wants to go swimming in a local swimming pool, an aquatic program, there's more than one within driving distance. Yes, sir.
Another question I might have, Dan, for you, is sometimes the facility make a difference? A newer facility that has more to do than one that's aging? We could even look at programs a little bit, too. One that's more robust, that has different aspects to it than ones that aren't.
Yep, absolutely. I've done, you know, a number of these where the local swimming pool is state-of-the-art, and it's a beautiful facility. And I've done plenty of them where you walk in and it's like 50 years and they probably haven't painted the place. So if, you know, I mean, as a citizen, as a, you know, working, you know, you're raising a family, if five miles away is the brand-new facility, and two miles away is the one that hasn't had a paint job in 10 years or 50 years, you know, where are you going to go? So you're absolutely right. Recreation services, and probably even, I would say, the aquatic program is one of those programs that's more competitive than others. Now, Susan and Steve may have a different opinion, but from my observation, that's a place where there's definitely a competitive environment there.
I would just add, that's absolutely true. And with the new pool just down the road in Newburgh, we know through the survey that we just did on the facilities master plan, that people are choosing to go there and looking at our facility. And we did not do a tour with Dan, by the way, but he's ringing true with what we're hearing from the community.
Moving on. All right, so these are my recommendations. Pretty much, these are always my recommendations, but they're also my recommendations in working with Susan and Steve. Especially for Parks and Rec organizations, I always, I think, I really, I think what you're doing right now is tremendous value. I like to see cities for recreation services set policies and targets for fee-generating revenues consistent with community values in ways that will maximize cost recovery. Ultimately, and this, again, this is my bias, ultimately, the quality of recreation services to some degree has to be based on cost recovery. In my observation, and there's probably plenty of places where I could be proved wrong, those cities that have the highest cost recovery levels tend to have the highest quality programs. For whatever reason, it just seems to work that way. One of the things I don't recommend is for you as the council to start setting individual fees for programs. My observation is these two people sitting to my left can do that quite capably. And for you as councilpeople to give them direction on values and policies, cost recovery strategies and targets, to me is like, that's the perfect, that's the perfect environment for them to operate in. Again, adjust fees annually and perform an annual review like we've done every three to five years. There's enough happens, that happens in a regulatory environment, there's enough happening in just general recreation opportunities and facilities, that in my observation, it's a good idea to come back through every three to five years with another analysis of cost like this. And then Susan mentioned the aquatic facility. Long-term facility maintenance programs, I continually find one of the biggest issues with recreation services is there's no long-term facility master plan, no long-term plan to upgrade facilities, to keep those facilities up to date. And then what happens is use tends to drop off and drop off, and then you're having a conversation, should we completely abandon this facility because it just gets so expensive to rebuild it? And so I just believe that that's, those are really, really important conversations to be having. And with that, that concludes my part of the presentation. Again, if you have questions, I'm more than happy to address them to the extent that I can.
Thank you, Dan. Let's open it up for the council to ask questions or clarify any of the presentation. So I'll open it up. Wendy?
Yeah, I had a question about, so the, our prices compared to the comparable communities weren't significantly different in terms of increasing fees. How, so if we're at 48% full cost recovery, there's a huge, that's doubling, right? So how, do you have any recommendations for how communities have approached that with regards to not blowing people out of the water with regards to changes?
Well, I was going to say that our goal for this project is not necessarily, we haven't got any policy direction to increase our cost recovery percentage, and we have approached this as we're trying to keep our general fund footprint the same while making those dial adjustments, so that we are making sure that we're subsidizing the right people in our community and the right programs in our community. So that is one of the questions, is that appropriate cost recovery percentage for us? And we have gone into this kind of assuming that that footprint of the general fund that the Parks and Rec uses will stay pretty consistent.
Okay.
But we want it to, instead of to align strictly with what Dan was explaining as dollars and cents, which has been driving every, the programming decisions for us, we want to look at it from an equity perspective instead.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Stevens, my essence, excuse me. My general response to a question like that is, again, my bias is really to be as aggressive as possible for a number of reasons. One of which is, again, my observation is that the cities that I've worked with, with the most attractive programs, also tend to charge the highest prices. But at the same time, and I think to Susan's point, having a very well-thought-out, aggressive scholarship discount program, and some of that is also designing programs, and Susan, I'm getting into your ear, so jump in here. I don't mean, you know, designing programs with specific population targets in mind. I've seen cities, recreation programs, they're very integrated with the local job placement programs, because they have access to a population that assists in that. So I really cannot overemphasize enough being very sensitive to revenues and cost. At the same time, you know, you have to have the sensitivity to the population segments within your community and setting opportunities for everybody to participate in recreation programs.
Adam?
First, the first thing that jumped out at me was that our Stars cost recovery is actually kind of right in line after all the KOB stuff. It was nice to see that we were in the realm. Second to that is, you know, I'm definitely open to any recommendations from Susan and Steve as far as cost recovery goes and turning that dial up. I'm not opposed to raising some of those rates that we are lower on, but definitely open to just leaving that in your guys' wheelhouse. And the other thing as far as cost recovery goes, I think we just need to be able to pair that exclusively to what value people are getting for that cost recovery if there is an increase. And we raised X amount of scholarships that we weren't offering before through this cost recovery increase, or whatever that works out to be as far as the value, but I just want to see a straight line drawn if we did go to a higher cost recovery model.
Thank you, Adam.
I have a few.
Go ahead, Remy.
So relating back to some of the things that have come up in terms of achieving social equity and available scholarship programs, so something's come to my attention that I've, we've talked about already is access to scholarships, or the ability to access scholarships, that sometimes that, just, the ability to actually access a scholarship is limiting for a family for various reasons. And so I feel like that's especially applicable within the KOB program. And when you were talking earlier about, you know, sometimes people were just making decisions on the fly, well, you know, it's better to just get this kid in here. I think that in terms of the KOB program, I would love to, I would really like to see that specific program kind of set apart and maybe not treated in the same way, not only in terms of cost recovery and that the importance of that particular family for our community at large, I feel deserves some special attention and being called out, but also that maybe there's an entirely, that it just gets a special attention in terms of making sure that we are maintaining some social equity, making sure that those students who need that program, that are the most challenged to access it, maybe who have parents that can't apply for those scholarships, that they're not limited from doing so. And that aside, I also, of course, am supportive of working towards of cost recovery and having a continued robust Parks and Rec program.
Thank you. And just related to the Kids on the Block program, so the technical advisory committee is going to have their final meeting tomorrow, we'll be bringing that back. That program is really leading the way on this conversation, and so we are working with the school district and applying their equity lens and some other things, and learning a lot through that, so I agree. And we are, we are kind of setting that aside and doing some special things with that that we'll be reporting back to you as soon as the KOB TAC is done. And it would, it may help, unfortunately, the graphic, the great graphic that I had back at my computer is not showing up here, but I'll describe it for you, because I think this really emphasizes the policy direction that we want. There was a column on the left-hand side, it was broken into three parts, and this is a trend in Parks and Rec programs that do have policy direction layered in with their fees. Thinking about three different tiers of the way we set fees, the top tier is those folks that get an individual benefit from our programs, so private rentals, private lessons, those would have a lower public subsidy and a higher cost recovery percentage. So we would, as Dan was kind of setting that up very nicely, we would charge aggressively on those because there's a high individual benefit. Then the mid-level would be those that have both an individual and a community benefit, and those would be our adult sports programs and some other things. And then if you look at the third and bottom tier that was on this great graphic that we had, that would be a much higher level of subsidy, much lower level of cost recovery, and that would be our youth sports, our after-school programs, our senior fitness programs. And then keep in mind, the city of McMinnville and Parks and Rec, we do a lot of free programs. There's going to be one launching here in about 15 minutes across the way at Upper City Park, we have a concert happening, we've done the whole Parks and Rec Month free. So there's even a fourth tier there that I would say, those are the places where we want to reach out to those members in the community that wouldn't traditionally be able to pay a fee, and we can talk to them about the scholarships and other things. But, so we really have set up for what we think of as a tiered program. What we'd like tonight is sort of an idea from you all that that's a good way to set this up, so building on what Dan presented in terms of adult, youth, and seniors, and even bisecting that a little bit more to say, are these individual benefiting programs, are these community benefiting programs? Survival Swim is another one that I wanted to mention that's really in the free program area, but has a huge community benefit for us, that kids don't pay fees for that type of thing. So that we're looking for head nods on. And then the other two may seem pretty basic, that we should be doing these, but we want to check in because we don't have a history, and frankly, as I mentioned at the introduction, we've been doing this somewhat inconsistently. And that is, should all of the Parks and Rec fee programs include a resident and a non-resident fee? We thought the answer to that would be yes. And then the, being aggressive with the scholarship program, as well as Dan mentioned, we're doing two things in that regard. One, we're test-driving the Kids on the Block scholarship program, and we are trying to use the school district's model for some of that. And then we are also setting up an easy donation page on our webpage, where you don't have to register an active net, which I know can be a barrier to some people, but if somebody wants to donate some money to a rec program scholarship, they can do it, and they'll get a tax-deductible receipt right then. We've seen some models across the state that we want to use for donations in that regard as well. So those are kind of the three head nod areas we're looking at, does this, you know, breaking the fees into those social equity strata that we talked about work, go forward with a non-resident fee, and then assuming you're good with us, making a transparent, clear, and accessible scholarship program instead of the nine or 10 different ones that we've administered across the city.
Susan, from, well, go ahead, Zach.
I had one question of the consultant, but I don't think I can fully articulate it, so I'll withdraw my question. I had the two concerns, and they've been addressed in the tiered kind of group versus individual that you hit on, and then Remy's point about Kids on the Block being kind of a separate in my mind as well. And then the only one, the other one I can think of is, in light of our last meeting, which we provided you to discuss direction on a longer time horizon, and which we will need to be, have a lot of allies out there, I just want to make sure that as we do this, we set ourselves up for success for going out for a potentially large ask in the future that... that, I don't know if that factored into your calculus, but it certainly factors into my calculus in moving forward with changing any rate structures on people. Not that I disagree with its intent, but.
Yeah, yeah, great question. There is limitations to a project like this. They tend to be looking at cost recovery as a, as a moment in time. So, the simple answer is, we did not look at anything that may come down in future, but certainly, all of that, especially a, any kind of a master plan, facility remodeling, all of that really needs to be factored into how fees are structured and set and long-term cost recovery strategies.
Okay. Susan, from my perspective, you know, as we talk of Kids on the Block, I really am excited that we've pulled that program and we've brought partners together, because that's one program that we have various partners, and I think we need to look at that through a different lens, as, as Remy said, our partners and what we're trying to accomplish. The other piece is, I'm excited that we are really looking into fee recovery, because my many years on council, you know, I think fee recovery, from a council perspective, we addressed it at the budget hearings, and we don't, we don't have a thorough discussion around it, and we rely way too much on this is where we're at, and, and I think we need to have a little more say in the policy, and the three questions you had up there give you some direction for us to come back and, and help mold that policy and then determine where we're going. But you guys are the experts, okay? And, and so, we need to feel, you know, where the programs are going and how they're going to be best utilized within the community, and the cost structure works right into there. And so, those, those are my, those are my couple of feelings. I'm excited about the road that we're going down and trying to understand and make more informed policy decisions, so that we can have a program that continues to be top-notch within the state. So, again, I'll open it up to any other comments. So, do you know, do you have your direction now from this meeting, where you know, I know we're starting, tonight we started, and so, you're going to be doing a little more homework coming back to us and giving the things that we need to have, so that we can help direct that policy?
Yep, yes, we've got what we need, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan, and Susan, and, and Steve, it's good to have you here. Again, good to see you, Dan.
Good to see you.
We'll take about a seven-minute break before we open up our regularly scheduled council meeting, and give us just a few moments. Thank you.